The order, today is December third, twenty twenty four.
All right, let's have the invitation and pledge.
Okay. Heavenly Father, we come to give you thanks, oh heavenly Father, for all that you've done for us and for what you're right now doing. We realize, oh God, that you're the source of our strength, you're the source of our hope and all that we do. We ask now, God, that you'll continue to bless us, bless our community. And we ask your blessings upon this meeting, all those that are present. We ask, oh God, your blessings upon the leadership of this meeting. And we pray that you give us the wisdom and the knowledge that we need to make the right decisions for Brunswick. We pray now, God, that you'll continue to bless our city, our state, and our nation. And we'll be careful, oh God, to give you all the glory, all the honor, and all the praise, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands, "One Nation Under God, Indivisible, with Liberty and Justice for All." All right, let's be seated. All right, our next procedure is to review the meeting procedures, and I have a little reading to do, so please bear with me. All right, the meeting procedures, the staff, the planning staff presents the application request to the planning commission during the staff's report. This report evaluates how the proposal conforms to the Glen County zoning ordinance and other applicable regulations and conforms to the comprehensive plan when applied to zoning matters and ordinances. Applicants shall have the opportunity to present their request to the planning commission. It is the responsibility of the applicant to make presentations on request and to address the conditions or factual findings with which they do not agree. Public hearings, public comments on public hearing items will be limited to thirty minutes for each opposing side, with a maximum of five minutes allocated to each speaker. Comments are to be limited to relevant information regarding your position and should avoid being repetitious. If your group has a spokesperson, please allow that individual to present your group's position in the allotted time. The applicant may then provide a rebuttal to any testimony. The chairman may terminate testimony if it becomes repetitive. The chairman will terminate a speaker's time if the speaker begins personal attacks. Your cooperation in this process will be greatly appreciated. And everybody in this room, I'd like to remind you that we all live in a small community, and we all need to be very cordial and polite to each other. You'd never know when you might see me or some applicants in the grocery store, and you'd certainly like to say hello to them and be friendly. So, thank you all for your cooperation. All right. So, we'll start general business. We need to approve the Mainland Planning Commission meeting, which it says here, held on October sixteenth, twenty twenty four. And I do believe, Ms. Leaf, that those have already been approved?
Yes, sir, thank you for asking. Yeah, this was our, this was already approved in November, so this was just an oversight on our part. So, at your January MPC meeting, we'll have the November and the December minutes on that agenda.
So, we'll do November and December and January?
Yes, sir.
Okay, thank you. So, that answers that question. All right, we'll move on to one point two. We got the review to propose twenty twenty five Mainland Planning Commission meeting calendar, Ms. Leaf.
I do have a slide for this, let me just bring this up. Thank you. Okay, so this is your proposed meeting dates for twenty twenty five. This is the first Tuesday of every month in twenty twenty five is what this calendar shows, with the exception of April. We have for a couple of years switched the date during the Glen County School District's spring break, just because a lot of folks are, tend to be out of town that week. So, we do have that date showing as April eighth instead of April, I think it was first of twenty twenty five. You do not need to approve this, there's no action needed. But if you do have any comments or any suggestions for different dates, feel free to let me know, and I can suggest that to the Board of Commissioners, who does approve the calendar for next year.
All right, Commissioners, do we have any questions from Ms. Leaf?
Yes, Chairman, I do have a question. On, I see that for April the eighth, the date has been changed from the first Tuesday to the second Tuesday for spring break.
Yes, sir.
I was just going to ask about August as well, because I know that in the month of August at the beginning, and I'm not sure what date it is for twenty twenty five, but typically, open house is held at the beginning of August. And I know for me, this past year and I think last year, it was difficult for me to kind of make it to the meeting because of open house. And I was just wondering, is there a possibility of maybe moving that to the second Tuesday as well?
School, school system open house, yes, okay.
Yeah, we can definitely take a look at that date. The school district should, should have that calendar. I could reach out to the school district to see if they do have those dates ready for that, for August, and if the other commissioners are okay with moving that date. If that's the case, then we can do that. Yeah, I'll look into that, and if it does fall during that week, then we'll, we'll adjust that, and I'll recommend to the Board of Commissioners that we change that date as well.
I have a, September second, September first is Labor Day, is that a, is Glen County open on Labor Day?
No. No, that's, that's another week that sometimes we have changed that as well, so. That is Labor Day week, so if that's a week that you want to push to the second, we can also look at that.
I don't have a problem with the second, I just thought that being a three-day weekend, and you have the meeting coming up right after that, if that was going to be any kind of issue, is all, it's fine by me, you know.
If other commissioners want to move that date, or we can leave it as is?
Well, I think, Ms. Leaf, he's trying to watch out for county staff.
I'll just appreciate that, thank you.
Yeah, so, I mean, I, I don't think it's a problem for us, you know.
I know for, you know, for those of us with, with kids, you know, we're, we're back in the office since the kids are in school starting in August, so we typically do have staff available that week. So, we're, we're fine staffing-wise, but if, you know, there's commissioners that plan to be out of town, then we can definitely modify it.
All right, is that all, Commissioners? All right, you said, Ms. Leaf, we don't need to do anything. You will change and then present that to us at the next meeting, change the dates?
So, it'll go straight to the Board of Commissioners at their December nineteenth meeting for their approval for next year? So, any suggestions is what I'd like to talk about today. So, you, I can send this back out to you all, just kind of to let you know, this is what I'm proposing to the board, just so you know.
Okay, sure. All right, do we have any planning commission announcements, new announcements?
No, sir.
Okay, all right, moving right along. Let's start the public hearing. Item two point one, SP dash two four dash three zero, one, ten twenty six Glen Park Road Site Plan. Consider a site plan approval for the addition to existing J and J Tire Business located at ten twenty six Glen Park Road, parcel zero three dash one three seven nine zero. Mr. Chris Amos, CSEC Incorporated Agent for Used Rubber LLC owner. All right.
Thank you, Stephanie Leaf, Planning and Zoning Department. So, this is the northern location for the J and J Tire, and this site plan was actually approved by the MPC in twenty twenty two, but it has expired. And although we did do a text amendment last year to help some of these site plans that were going to expire, to extend them, unfortunately, the timing of when this one was approved kind of fell outside that window, so unfortunately, they didn't fall under what we could extend, so that is why they're back before you tonight. And this is north, north on Glen Park Road, north end of seventeen. So, they are planning to do about seventy-six hundred square feet of additional space at their business, and this would encompass four additional service bays. They are requesting a buffer modification, they are required to do a type E, that ten-foot landscape buffer along Glen Park Road, but they do have some existing parking and asphalt in that location, so they are requesting to not install a type E along that stretch. And then here is their site plan, the bottom of the screen is Glen Park Road. So, this is their existing access, kind of the left-hand sort of hashed area, that's their existing building and their existing parking. And then to the right side of the plan, this is where they're planning to do the addition. And then, as you can see, they're adding parking, adding more asphalt. So, the type E buffer would go along here, but in this part of the property, they, this is where they have the parking and asphalt as well as their entrance. So, just a little more detail on the buffer modification, it's the stretch along Glen Park Road. And then here's just a Google view, looking from Glen Park Road into the property. Again, here's their existing, and then to the north side of this building is where they're planning to do the addition. And this is showing their additional property, this location. And these are your possible motions, and there is a draft a possible motion that does include the buffer modification, if it is the MPC's desire to grant that buffer modification. And Mr. Amos is here representing the applicant.
Okay.
Thank you.
I got a question for you, Ms. Leaf. This came up before us in twenty twenty two?
Yes, sir.
And I do remember. Do you recall exactly what we did with that buffer along the front in twenty twenty two?
It wa, it was, it was approved to, to modify it, I think they, the plan did not show the buffer on the plan at that time either, so.
So, they haven't done anything at all to their site plan?
Since then?
Since twenty twenty two?
I'll defer to Mr. Amos if there is anything. My understanding is that it's the exact same plan from twenty twenty two, but Mr. Amos can share if there is any, any slight change.
I see Mr. Amos back there shaking his head, no.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Leaf. All right, any questions, Commissioners? Thank you, Ms. Leaf. All right, Mr. Amos?
Good evening, Commissioners, and the answer to that question was no. This is exactly the same site plan that you approved previously. Want to clarify that there are two existing enclosed bays, we're adding two more enclosed bays, and then there's an open bay to work on trailers that can't fit inside the building with a shed roof on it. But this site plan is identical, in fact, we, after the site plan approval, we submitted all of the engineering plans, site development plans, the building plans, all of that was approved by the county. Then Jacob took a while getting the project underway, and by the time he got it underway, found out that the site plan was expired, and we had to go back through the process. So, what I did is copied the exact same site plan as the one that had been previously approved, and just resubmitted that with the, with the entire package.
Okay.
And there is no room for a buffer on the front, which is why we, we dealt with this the last time.
Yes, sir.
The building was located, in fact, none of those businesses have landscaping on the front of them, that entire strip. So, this is consistent with everything else that's there.
Yes, sir.
And I can answer any other questions you may have.
All right, Commissioners, any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Amos. All right, it's time to open the public hearing portion of this item. Do I have anyone that's in favor, that'd like to speak in favor of two point one, item number? Okay, hearing none, seeing none? Do I have any folks that would like to speak in opposition of item two point one? Okay, hearing none, seeing none. We're closing the public portion hearing, Commissioners.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve SP dash two four dash three zero as presented.
Okay, I got a, I got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. All in favor? All right, the number is four zero. Thank you, Mr. Amos.
And Mr. Chairman, if I could just clarify, when you say as presented, that includes the no buffer along Glen Park Road, correct?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, folks, moving right along. All right, we had item number two point two, ZM dash twenty four dash two two, twenty-six sixty-eight and twenty-six seventy-eight Highway seventeen South rezone, consideration of an amendment to an existing planned development district, GC dash twenty-one dash ninety-seven. The amendments include, but are not limited to, the addition of a car wash as a use, as a modification to the buffer requirements. Property is located at twenty-six sixty-eight, twenty-six seventy-eight Highway seventeen South, partial zero three dash two one one zero seven, Pete Schonauer, Tidewater Engineering Incorporated Agent for Mr. Joe Fendig, applicant, and ninety-five NASCAR Boulevard LLC owner. All right, Ms. Leaf?
Thank you. So, this is a rezon application, there's also two other companion applications that go along with this. One is a site plan application that was also on your agenda tonight for public hearing, but the applicant did, just a couple of days ago, or I guess before the weekend, they asked to defer this application to, to the January meeting. They are looking at making some changes to the site plan, so they are looking to have that deferred. And I note that simply because the site plan is also attached to this planned development text as their plan for the site, so any modifications to that, you know, could affect, you know, what this rezon reason is. So, we'll, so what we discussed with the applicant was, you have this discussion, if it's the MPC's desire to, you know, continue to have the public hearing, just knowing that there are going to be some changes, most likely, to, to this plan that goes with this PD text. There's also a companion preliminary plat, that is an administrative approval. They are planning to break out a portion of this property so that they can do the car wash on this site. So, this property is currently zone plan development now, and this is the location, this is on the south end of Highway seventeen, Rexet twenty-nine. And they are asking to amend the planned development text to add the Tunnel Express Car Wash, as well as modify a fifty-foot buffer, wooded buffer, that is shown on, on the master plan for the PD. So, this is the existing planned development text for the site. So, they are required to have a ten-foot landscape buffer or landscape strip along the frontage road. So, there's a frontage road that comes off of Highway seventeen and accesses property. They also have some different setbacks here. And then at the bottom of the screen is where the current PD indicates this fifty-foot natural buffer. So, it basically surrounds, it's really on two sides of the property, it's fifty foot, fifty-foot natural buffer. And so, this is the plan that's in the existing PD text. So, just to kind of orient you, Highway seventeen is, is along here. And then, what's on, what's shown on this plan is not what's currently on the site now, so, by their access, via the frontage road, you know, comes into the site. The car wash plan is this kind of triangular piece right over here. The remainder of the site is currently the convenience store, the Dairy Queen, there's a gas station there. And where these green areas are indicating, this is the fifty-foot buffer, currently runs along this entire stretch of property, and it also runs along here. So, the, the property, over on this side, I guess that'd be the directionally, let's see, that would be the east, is that the east side of the property? They, what's planned there is either, you know, a mixed-use project of some sort, this is along Andy Tossenson Road. On this side, where this green buffer is shown, there is a commercial property that's along Highway seventeen here, but then there is a residential neighborhood back here, so this is a single family. And so, a portion of this buffer does buffer the single-family lots from this commercial stretch here. And what their proposal is, is to modify it around, around this location to reduce it down to twelve feet. So, from fifty to twelve feet, they would have a six-foot privacy fence too. So, their, this is their planned development text proposal, so it does show that the only use they're adding is a Tunnel Express Car Wash. There are some other commercial uses that are currently allowed on the property. They're also modifying the side yard from, the side yard setback from ten feet to seven feet. And then here's the buffer language where they modify it from fifty feet to reduce type A at a certain point, as shown on the site plan. And this is why this connection with the site plan is key here, is because they are referring to the site plan to really indicate exactly what that buffer will be, you know, on this property. So, this is the proposed site plan that I indicated they are planning to make some changes to. And this is the, the car wash location here, and then on the right-hand side is the existing convenience store, Dairy Queen. And then just kind of zoom in on the buffers here, again, here is the access, this would be where the car wash vacuum stations are. The twelve-foot buffer would basically come from, like, frontage road and Highway seventeen into the property. And about this location, kind of behind this single-family lot, is where it does start to reduce, you know, from fifty feet to twelve. It was fifty feet from this point back. And I will note, there is a detention pond they're showing back here too, and this little stretch would also be required to have a fifty-foot buffer, according to the PD as well. So, they would have a detention pond that would be going into that buffer. So, here's some photos of the site, so this is the access road coming in, on the right is Dairy Queen, convenience store, and then back where you see this fence, so this fence is kind of along the buffer currently, and so this is the property here. And these are your possible motions. And Mr. Schonauer and Mr. Fendig are both here for the. And Mr. Schonauer and Mr. Fendig are both here for this application this evening. Thank you.
I have a comment on that. If, okay, that one right there. If I'm not mistaken, they called for the 50-foot buffer along the northeast and the northwest side. And if I'm not mistaken, this is only a portion of the original tract for that zoning text, and the 50-foot buffer would not apply to that upper right-hand corner over there because it was on the property line further back.
Yes, um, let's see.
If I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's a good question. So they, yeah, this may actually be, be reduced here. So I think, because I think this, this shows a 50-foot buffer along here. So I think what you're saying is maybe it's not as, the site itself is not as large as what was originally.
Yeah.
That would be, yeah, I think they, it cut off, so we're around here. So that's a good point. You're right. I think where they have a detention pond, there's no longer a buffer that would be required there. But on this adjacent property, yeah, it'd be kind of a buffer sort of in the middle of the property.
Right, it affects the left-hand side, but it doesn't affect the rear of our property on it.
Yeah, yeah, that's right. Yep, that's a good point.
And I guess the other question, well, what, what they submitted on their drawing was an expedited plat. It was the base map they had for that. I guess it's subject to the rezoning approval, is what they're looking at doing.
Yeah, that actually ended up, they did originally submit it as an expedited subdivision because they were really just, you know, so what they were doing is just really splitting off this, this piece right here from this larger tract. But one of the other requirements of the planned development text, the existing PD text, is that this frontage road is dedicated to the county as county right-of-way, and that has never been done. And so what, what we did was we asked them to submit it as a preliminary plat instead of an expedited subdivision, so that we could go through the preliminary plat and final plat process, so that the right-of-way dedication could be done through that plat and go to the Board of Commissioners for their acceptance. So that's why we're going that route with it. And there is, I know they have recently revised a preliminary plat to show that the frontage road would be dedicated to the county, so we'll be able to, I think, move forward on, on that. So that would be this stretch right here would be dedicated as right-of-way.
Right, but they're also subdividing the parcel.
They are, yes. They're dividing this larger tract into two. So you kind of, I think they basically are showing it right here, so it kind of surrounds this area down. I'm not sure if this is exact boundaries as shown on the plat, I don't have that with me, but, but yeah, they're dividing it so they can just do the car wash on a separate lot.
No more questions?
I do have a question, too, and I'm just trying to get my bearings. Now, did you say there's a, an existing subdivision behind this? Do you know the name of that?
It is, yeah, let me see if I've got, okay. Yes, Boykin Ridge is a subdivision. So here is a parcel where the star is located, and, and this red, this red is a freeway commercial. So this is commercial, kind of mostly adjacent to where the car wash will be, but part of the car wash property does abut, basically this lot. So there's like two and a half lots is about what this will be up against.
Okay, so across Highway 17, if I'm right, that would be Royal Oaks subdivision?
Right, that's right, yeah. Across 17 is Royal Oaks, exactly. And, and Boykin Ridge, I think you can get to through, like, Andy Tossonson Road.
That's in front of the new hotel.
Royal Oaks is behind, is across the street.
Right.
Is across 17. But the most adjacent thing to this building, to what he want, this proposed building project?
Oh, it's the new hotel.
Is the new hotel.
Okay, I got you.
All right, commissioners, any other questions?
Sure.
Okay. All right. Since we have no questions from Ms. Leaf, let's talk to Mr. Pete Schonauer.
Good evening, commissioners. Pete Schonauer, Tidewater Engineering. We are proposing to amend the PD to allow, the biggest, the biggest part is to allow the, the tunnel car wash. It's not an approved use right now. We think it's an appropriate use. We're asking for a, a reduction in the side yard setback, which the only, the only person who would be impacted by that would be the seller of the property, the owner of the whole parcel, who operates the Dairy Queen and the, and the C store there. So we don't see that as being too big of an issue. So, and then the other request is that we do, that we are allowed a reduction in that 50-foot buffer for a portion of one lot, the one that, that lot that is also adjacent to the freeway commercial property in red there, and it'd be roughly half of their backyard where we reduce it to what is, I mean, now a typical buffer would be type A buffer, right, which would be a 20-foot landscape buffer or a 12-foot landscape buffer with a six-foot fence. So we're proposing what is typically considered a, an acceptable setback by the current zoning ordinance. This PD text was written with that 50-foot buffer in there. Once we get past the, I don't know, if we go back to the site plan, maybe is there a way to? Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much. So in order, in order to get through the pay station and then make that right U-turn and enter the tunnel, we do, we do have to encroach into that buffer. What we're trying, the reason we took, or the reason we deferred the, the site plan application is because we are working on an alternate site plan, trying our best to minimize our reduction, you know, the, the required reduction to the buffer. We're not there yet. It's, it's, it's an awkward site. It's a triangular site. We have, access is kind of already determined from what's out there existing with that frontage road. So like I said, we're working on, on a, on a site plan to hopefully be able to reduce the impact of the buffer. I don't think that we can avoid that 100% in front of that one residential lot. Don't think asking for a type A modified buffer in front of what's already, or what's currently zone freeway commercial is too much of an ask. We're hoping that, that, that's something that you can find acceptable. Over in that corner, adjacent to the C store, there is an existing dry detention pond, which is in, in bad shape, so part of this project would be to fix that and get it up to standards and make sure that we can provide, require some water management for, for both, both pieces of property there.
That's where all your runoff is going today.
It's going to go that way, yeah.
Okay.
I don't think we can discharge to the DOT right away because of the current elevations, everything sloping away from the highway, so it's not really, I don't, I don't think it's going to be feasible to drain to the DOT right away.
All right, commissioners, we got any questions for Mr. Schonauer?
Not this time.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right, it's time to open the public hearing portion of this item, which is 2.2, ZM-24-22, 2668 and 2678 Highway 17 South Rezone. Do I have anyone in the audience that would like to speak in favor of this item number? Okay, hearing none, seeing none? Do I have any folks that would like to speak in opposition of this item number? Okay. Ladies, y'all have five minutes each.
Good evening, commission.
Could, could I have your name, please?
My name is Karen Polite. This is Ms. Gwen Munchison. Ms. Munchison represents the James Hopkins Estate as the administrator of the estate. So we're just coming, we're not in opposition, first to be clear, we're not in opposition or for it. We want clarity. I'm just here as a family friend, having a little bit of knowledge, and want to make sure that Ms. Munchison is okay with everything moving forward, okay? So we want to make sure that we understand that there is no impact to the James Hopkins Estate, which lies east of this property. If you're facing the property for Highway 17, looking at 2668, 2678, with my back to 17, I'm looking at the property, James Hopkins Estate is to the left, is to the east.
Wait, w- w-. Yeah, right here.
And the way it's turned around on the map is a little bit confusing for us because it appears to be that she, the young lady referenced to the west, but the James Hopkins Estate is to the east, the commercial property, Mr. Andy Tossonson, is to the west of the property, if I'm looking at the property as I'm standing right here. Mr. Tossonson's to the west, James Hopkins Estate is to the east. We want to ensure that there's no impediment, impaction to the future development.
Ms. Polite, I think that's just the opposite, and I may, I may be confused here, but I think that the estate that you're speaking of would be?
Right there's north, right east-west.
It's to the west, I'm sorry. It's to the west.
Okay, I wanted to clarify. Yes, ma'am.
And Mr. Tossonson is to the east.
Correct, okay.
Yes.
All right.
So we wanted, we just, we're just here to ensure that there's no impediment, no impacting to the estate of Mr. James Hopkins, and that there's been no deficiency in value, that they're not being asked to diminish any value to their property and to the estate to, to move forward with their project of the car wash, because I understand the car wash is going to be on the east side, correct?
That, that is correct.
Okay, that's what I thought. I've been out to the property, I know it pretty well, pretty decently.
Okay.
And so we just want to ensure that to Ms., Ms. Munchison as the administrator, that that is what we're doing here. And they are looking to work together with the families that are there, because I'm here, yeah, as a family friend for more than one parcel.
Okay, Ms. Polite and Ms. Munchen, all of those questions are very valid questions, and we'll have county staff and the applicant speak to each of those. Yes, ma'am.
We appreciate you all so much, thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, ladies. All right, do we have anyone else in opposition? Okay.
Mr. Chairman, could I ask Ms. Leaf, if she would, to identify on the map where this estate they're referring to is located?
Yeah, so if you see where the blue star is located?
Right.
This red FC zone parcel is, is the Hopkins Estate. Yeah, and it does, we do show it on the, yeah, you can, it's kind of hard to see, you might be able to see it better on your screen, but, but this does identify this parcel as the Hopkins Estate here.
Okay, so that FC is the estate?
Correct, yes. Yes, sir.
And that is on freeway commercial. When you go, Mr. Dawson, when you go into the Dairy Queen, that parcel of land will be on your left-hand side as you go into the entrance to the Dairy Queen.
Right.
Okay? All right, commissioners, I don't have anyone else in the audience that would like to speak in opposition, so I'm going to close this portion of the public hearing for ZM-24-22. Commissioners, do we have any questions from Ms. Leaf? And then I'd like for Mr. Schonauer to get up and speak to the next two ladies' questions. All right, I don't think we got any questions for you, Ms. Leaf. All right, Mr. Pete, let's have it.
Okay, I don't think that we will have any negative impact on that property. I think just the opposite. Right now, there is, there appears to be some drainage issues between our, our property and that, and that property in the estate, and it's every bit of our intention to, we've identified one of the problems, there's, there's a ditch back there, and there's a, you know, over years, there's sediment accumulated, and it's blocking the water from heading towards where that detention area is. That is completely, you know, needs to be redone. So we think we can improve the drainage there, and also through the planning process, creating the, instead of having a 60-foot egress-ingress easement, it'll be a public right-of-way, and it absolutely ensures that they have access to that, that parcel. So I think if anything, it's, it'll be a good thing.
Yes, sir. All right, Mr. Schonauer, I'd like for you to speak about the law that the engineering folks have to abide by to keep all of your runoff water on your property when you develop it.
Well, I don't, I don't want to say it's, I don't want to talk about the law, that's for Mr., Mr. Aaron over here, but.
But, but is, I'm sorry, it is a requirement.
It is a requirement that we address stormwater properly, and there, there's, there's several components to that. One is, if they historically have water coming across our property, we have to accept that and either redirect it or.
Yes, sir.
Make it part of our system. We can't just dam them up and create a flooding problem for them, just like we cannot increase our floaters, our peak discharge rates onto adjacent property. But if, if our water from our side historically is going in a certain direction, then we still have the opportunity to continue to discharge that in that direction, but we have to slow it down.
Yes, sir.
As we're, as we're adding impervious area. So we definitely have to address that. Engineering staff is going to make sure that we've done that properly.
So ultimately, what I was looking for is there's going to be negative impacts for drainage on the FA piece of property.
There will be positive impacts. Right now, there's some drainage issues, there's standing water there. We hope to eradicate that, we hope to make that standing water go away.
I, I meant to say, I'll clarify that, I meant to say there wasn't going to be any negative impact. I didn't say there was.
Correct.
Okay.
That, that is my, that's my position.
All right. All right, commissioners, any questions?
I do, hang on just one second, Pete, if you would. I was just wondering, we've got the 50-foot buffer there on the west side. Has there been any conversation or anything with adjacent residential landowners over there?
We, we haven't, we haven't been able to make contact yet, and really, our focus would be on that, that one neighbor who, who would have the reduction in the buffer.
Jason, Jason Blake, I think is.
Is it Jason Blake?
He's the first lot, residential lot, as you're heading to the north there.
We would like to make contact and, and approach him and get his opinion on what, what he feels would be a suitable replacement for losing that, you know, portion of the buffer.
Right.
Whether it's enhanced planting, you know, we could even volunteer to plant on his property. He's got a very deep backyard there, I think, so.
He's got a big backyard, he does.
Yeah.
But that was my only concern, was, because he's the only one that's really impacting.
Correct.
Mr. Schonauer?
Yes, sir.
Please, please don't come back to this commission and say, we talked to the guy, he didn't want to talk to anybody. Please have him call staff or, or talk to someone or get a statement from him, a written statement. So, so that, ultimately, that's what we're trying to do, is protect the homeowners.
I understand.
And, and I, I know you and Mr. Fendig want to do that also, but, but we need to make sure that that's taken care of, so we don't have any negative feedback on this.
I agree. I want to be able to come back and say, we.
Yes, sir.
We had a great conversation, productive conversation, and we're moving forward.
Yes, sir. If you could, you know, get him to call Ms. Leaf and, and, and give his concerns or displeasures or pros or cons or whatever's necessary.
Absolutely.
So we can get this done for y'all. All right, any other questions? Mr. Dawson, you happy?
I'm good.
All right, everybody okay? All right. Ms. Leaf, you don't have anything else? All right, commissioners?
No, just as a, just a reminder, the, the plan that is shown here, they will be coming back with changes to this, so I don't know how, how much that will affect the buffer at this point. I don't know if Mr. Schonauer wants to talk anymore about what those proposed changes are, or, that's, that's my only concern with, if you do vote on this tonight, that there needs to be a condition that there's still a final site plan that would need to, well, the site plan would still come before you all, but in terms of the rezone, the plan would need to be revised, though.
All right.
So.
Okay, and there's two things. Basically, it's just comments by me I would like to, to, to make. Being born and raised within four miles of exit 29, I can tell you there's a great need for this in that area. It's going to be very welcome. The second thing I'd like to say is, Mr. Joe Fendig, I've known of him and known him for a very long time, and what he does and says is first class. So we have to take that in consideration, and he told me that he would do whatever was necessary to make these homeowner, this particular homeowner happy with this situation. He's that type gentleman. I'd just like for all the commissioners to understand that and, and take that in consideration. All right, commissioners, discussion.
Is, is there a benefit to get the rezone tonight? Or can we defer this to? Or can we defer this to next month's meeting? And do it with the site plan? I mean, is there a benefit to doing that without seeing what the actual site plan will be?
Yeah, that's, I'm not sure their timing, but if this was approved tonight or recommended for approval, we do have this going to the December 19th Board of Commissioners meeting. So that meeting would get pushed to January as well. But it could still be, you know, on the MPC in January and still go to a Board of Commissioners in January. So it's really for the applicant, whether that still works with their timing. I mean, knowing they won't get their site plan approved till January, you know, that timing may work out.
Okay. Mr. Schonauer and Mr. Fendig, you're okay with that? That's not going to affect you in any way?
My only question is, if it goes to your planning for January and if it gets approved, then when may it go to the Board of Commissioners?
Yeah, it'd be, it'd be two weeks after that. So I don't have the exact date in front of me, but it would be...
Are you in a purchase agreement on this property that's time-sensitive?
I am, I'm through, this, through February 4th at the moment. It expires tomorrow, in fact, but he's going to extend it through February 4th. He's going to be out of the country, so...
Okay.
We got all this resolved by December 7th.
Okay. You don't have a problem with deferring it? All right, Commissioners? We heard it straight from the man. Let's have discussion and let's have a motion.
I just think the site plan, I think, is crucial to the rezoning. So I just think we need to defer it.
I think that's a very good idea.
Can I, I'll just go ahead and make a motion to defer ZM-24-22 to the January...
Seventh.
Seventh MPC meeting.
Okay, I got a motion, I need a second.
A second.
All right, I have a motion and a second, all in favor. All right, Mr. Fendig and Mr. Schonauer, we see y'all January 7th. Thank you.
All right, we got it done, guys.
They have a motion adjourned?
There's no need to vote on the deferment for the site plan, though, correct?
Mr. Chairman, if you can, vote to defer it. That way it stays on the record and we don't have to renotice it.
We need to have a motion to defer?
Yes, please.
All right, item 2.3, SP-24-29, 2668 and 2678 Highway 17 Site Plan. Okay, we don't need to have public hearing or anything, do we?
No, you can defer the public hearing and the application. Public hearing can then be held in January.
Okay. All right, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to defer SP-24-29 to the January 7th Mainland Planning Commission meeting.
I'll second that. Commissioners, all in favor? Four zero is the vote.
All right.
All right, I need a motion to adjourn. All right. Let's have it.